Executive Director, David Levitas. David?
Great, thank you so much, Godfrey, and thank you, everybody, for being here today. Like Godfrey said, my name is David Levitas, he/him pronouns, and I'm the executive director of LA Forward Institute, and just really excited for everybody to be here with us today. So the mission of LA Forward Institute, we're a 501(c)(3) organization, is to work for a more fair and flourishing LA County for everybody, and to advance policies and organizing and communications that further that purpose. So, as you know, as a 501(c)(3) organization, as Godfrey mentioned, this is a nonpartisan event, not connected to any endorsement process. There is an organization known as LA Forward, which, you know, is a 501(c)(4), but then that's our sister organization, but it's a, it's separate from this one, and is not connected to any endorsement process. This forum is not connected to any endorsement process that LA Forward may do. So, happy to turn it back to Godfrey and to say more, a little bit about the election.
Thank you so much, David. And for folks I don't know, my name is Godfrey Plata. My pronouns are he/him/his. While I am not in CD2, I've supported a lot of the organizing work that has emanated from our CD2 residents through LA Forward Institute. As David mentioned, we are having this particular conversation because, believe it or not, it's election time already. And so just to make sure we're on the same page as we talk about elections, again, our goal is to educate the larger public here. The next set of elections will refer to as a primary for a number of reasons. So you will receive ballots in your mail the week of February 5th, with the final day to vote being March 5th. So you have the entire month to be able to vote. We know that for city council, which is what we're here to discuss, if no one gets more than 50% of the vote, there will be a runoff between the top two vote-getting candidates, and that will be in October, November. Again, you'll have a month to vote because of mail-in voting, as well as vote centers that will be open either 11 days before or four days before the actual final day of voting. However, to get to the ballot, candidates can actually get their nomination papers in and file all the way up until December. So we won't know until December who the very finalist of candidates is. However, we invited all six candidates who have filed for CD2 to join us today, and you'll meet them in a little bit. And in order to even qualify to appear on the ballot, they will need to get signatures collected from constituents in their district, and that will be happening starting mid-September. So we wanted to make sure we were positioning this conversation today, in case any of you out there watching this, either by recording or live, can help your candidate of choice get on the ballot if you would like. So anyway, that's what we're looking forward to in terms of the election. I'm going to pass things to a resident from CD2 and very heavy LA Forward volunteer and organizer, Jason Enright, to tell us a little bit about his district.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jason Enright. I'm a community organizer who works with LA Forward, particularly right now on our unarmed crisis response organizing. I'm also a CD2 resident. I own a home with my wife in the Camellia neighborhood, located near Tahunga in Sherman Way. Most importantly, I'm a father of a young boy who is asymmetrically gifted, which is a fancy term for my child, who is very bright and sweet, but sometimes struggles with social emotional issues. I tell you all this because I think like every voter in our district, life is complicated. We all have a lot of things on our plates that we think about day-to-day. And when I talk to other parents and to my friends, they tell me that they don't always have the time or the energy for politics. But politics is all around us. When I take my family to the grocery store and we pass tents and RVs where our unhoused neighbors live, that's because someone made the choice to build luxury apartments instead of affordable housing. When we walk to the library and see a woman having a mental breakdown in the parking lot, and we have no one to call to help her, that's because someone made the political choice not to fund mental health initiatives for an armed crisis response. When propaganda is sadly being spread at our schools, including my child's school, Saticoy Elementary, that's because no one is stepping in to counteract this dangerous misinformation and help calm the tensions between these different groups. My friends don't always care about politics because they don't think anyone in politics cares about them. They see that certain neighborhoods get all the funding while others are forgotten. They see that only the loudest get help, not those who are the most in need. They don't feel like anyone is willing to fight for them. So as I listen to each of the candidates tonight, I'm looking to hear who is going to be the champion for our district, who is going to drive north of Victory Boulevard to meet with all of their voters, not just those with the most money to donate, who is going to lead us through these complicated times and help raise our district up. Thank you for that. And now I'm going to tell you a little bit more about our district. Council District 2 includes the communities of North Hollywood, Studio City, Sun Valley, Valley Glen, Valley Village, Van Nuys, and Tulca Lake. It is home to 260,065 Angelenos and 96,059 households. As of the 2020 census, which was before the most recent redistricting, the district's demographics were 43% Hispanic, 42.9% white, 6.7% Asian, 4.6% black, and 0.3% Other. The district has a median income of $50,000 a year, and the average rent for a one-bedroom in North Hollywood is $1,773. Our current representative on the city council is Paul Krikorian, who's represented us since 2009, but has now termed out, leaving the seat open for new representation, which leads us to our event tonight, where the six candidates running to represent CD2 have all agreed to join us for a discussion of the issues facing our city. However, I do have to let you know that one of the candidates had a personal emergency and had to not make it to join us tonight. That's candidate Willie Fort. We hope that all is well with him, and we get to talk with him in the future. But the five candidates we'll be hearing from tonight are John Paul Byrd, Gillian Burgos, Manny Gonias, Sam Kabushian, and Adrin Nazarian. And now I'll be passing it back to Godfrey to talk about our rules for the night.
Thank you so much, Jason. Jason is incredible, resident and father to get to know in CD2 if you are there. Let's talk about the rules, because we just want to make sure this is a fair forum. Again, making sure it's nonpartisan and folks know exactly what this is about. We've told the candidates all of these things in advance, so they hopefully are as prepared as they can be to represent themselves in their campaigns. They will each be given a 90-second opening statement and a 90-second closing statement, during which they can share whatever it is that they want during these openings and closings to help us get to know them and their campaigns. They've also been given a couple of issue questions in advance, and you're going to see the topics in a moment. But there's five of them, and they'll have 60 seconds each to represent their perspective relevant to that particular issue question. We're going to put a timer that looks like this on the screen, with the right amount of time for whatever it is that they're doing, be it a 90-second opening or closing, as well as a 60-second issue response question. And our speakers or question askers will jump in if it says zero to introduce the next person, just to make sure that we're keeping things as fair as possible in terms of timing. We're going to go alphabetically. As you can see, we were planning on Willie for it. We're doing a little bit of switching. And so we're going to go alphabetically by last name. And what we're going to do is for each subsequent question, we're going to rotate. So for opening statements, you're going to hear John Paul Byrd go first, followed by Gillian Burgos, et cetera. However, for the next question, the next moment candidates can speak, Gillian Burgos will go first, followed by Manny Gonias, and then it'll rotate all the way with John Paul Byrd going at the very end of that particular group. And we're just going to continue to rotate through as each subsequent question comes past. Again, we have shared our questions in advance, and these topics are the ones that are going to be the ones covered today. We know we can ask about a million things as Angelenos, but these are particular issue areas that have come up a lot in the course of organizing work at LA Forward this past year, and we know are relevant to a lot of the conversations happening at city council today and in the future as well. And so that's where we're going from here. Without further ado, would love to make sure now we are just moving on to the candidates. And so we are going to begin our opening statements with the first one going to John Paul Byrd. John?
Well, hello, LA Forward. Well, I don't know about you, but I think the city council could use a therapist. My name is John Paul Byrd. I am a marriage and family therapist and a lifelong Angelino. Now, I believe that mental health intervention needs to be a part of our public safety apparatus, and that there's no way that we can work our way out of the homelessness crisis until we prioritize the need for mental health services. Now, my family goes back three generations, both in the San Fernando Valley and in the East Hollywood Silver Lake area. So this, this is my home. And I'm running because I want to protect it more than anything else, right? Growing up in the East Hollywood and Silver Lake area in the 90s, I've seen firsthand how gentrification displaces families and cultures. And I believe, I believe that we can improve our neighborhoods without replacing everyone who lives in them. I think it's kind of a crazy idea. Our communities are powerful, and they provide an immense amount of well-being, resiliency, and support for those who are in it, right? And as we move forward to futurize our city, I'm absolutely dedicated to respecting those who have made lives here, raised their children or grown up in this district. There's no reason to sacrifice their well-being, their homes, or to force them out of their communities that they're part of making strong. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Our next candidate is Gillian Burgos.
Hi, everyone. My name is Gillian Burgos, and I'm an Afro-Latina, small business owner, lifelong renter, and I am the only woman in the race running for Los Angeles City Council District 2. I am not a politician, but I have been called to lead. So NoHo has been my home for over a decade, and I became deeply invested in helping the people of my community. Two huge life events happened. First off, my mother's descent into dementia, and the second, after losing my younger cousin, Jolan Elise Domínguez, who was my rock in helping me get my mother into a skilled nursing facility. She lost her life due to the avoidable circumstances of poverty. And so this ignited my start in my journey to becoming a public servant, and I ran for the NoHo Neighborhood Council. So I am the chair of Housing and Services and the Treasurer, and it has been my greatest joy to serve NoHo for the past two years. I have passed several grants that have better unhoused neighbors and have given mental health services to teens and mentorship, and also have created tenant right workshop. So I have built relationships with the community, with community groups, especially mutual aid organizations, and they are already doing the work, and I am doing the work with them. My major focus will be housing as a human right and advocating for social housing. I'm also focusing on expanding transportation, our green spaces, and implementing unarmed crisis response. I look forward to bringing compassion and humanity back to city council.
Thank you so much. Timely. Our next candidate is Manny Gonias. Manny?
Here.
There you are.
Good evening. Thank you, LA Forward, for hosting. I want to talk to you about change. I think it's an important topic, the kind of transformative change that I think Los Angeles desperately needs. You see, I know the city inside out. Like many, I'm a third-generation Angelino. I live in North Hollywood with my family. Raised by a single mother, I learned the value of hard work and resilience from a very young age. I worked at a local market, hustled my way through college, became a first-generation graduate from UCLA, go Bruins. And these experiences shape who I am today. You know, I understand the struggles, I understand the dreams that come with wanting to just do better for your family. I've taken on the very issues that are plaguing our city. I've taken on luxury housing developments that threaten vulnerable communities. I fought against polluters that poison our homes and combat the climate crisis by making our neighborhoods greener and more resilient. And I've worked tirelessly to provide access to affordable housing. Now I'm ready to take that fight to City Hall. We know that these enormous challenges are not just in a vacuum. They've been decades in the making, including homelessness, housing, crime, corruption, all of these things. Need new ideas, a fresh perspective, and I love to cut the red tape and just elect, you know, we can't keep doing the same, which is elect the same old politicians, or we're going to get the same outcomes. So together, I believe we could reshape City Hall, make it work for all Angelenos. Let's stop growing inequality, bring about real change, and I've dedicated my whole life to this, so I know what it takes. I know City Hall is broken. I'm up to the task of fixing it, and together, I know you're proud of a city that we won't call home. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next candidate, Sam Kabushian. Sam?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for LA Forward for hosting this great event, and I think this is an opportunity for a lot of people to, at firsthand, to introduce themselves. And my name is Sam Kabushian. I'm a former SCIU organizer, a small business owner who helps local businesses navigate the government bureaucracy. I'm a husband and a parent. I'm supported by constituents who are frustrated by decisions made out of, out of touch politicians in City Hall. I mean, City Hall is corrupt and beholden to developers. Corruption is what led to the LA housing crisis, skyrocketing rents, low wages, and a lack of compassion to people who are at the lowest point of their lives. It's a difficult times for all of us, and we need to fight collectively, building coalitions. I'm supporting following, you know, in current, in current issues that, expanding the city council, wrapping around, wraparound services for the unhoused, pretending, protecting tenant rights from unfair evictions and fair wages for all workers. I mean, just now, as we talk about these problems here, trying to connect with voters, you know, you know, be in their face. I mean, the 11th migrant bus just arrived today at City Hall. I mean, we know what it is. And this is a very important time to stand up to these issues, and I look forward further introducing myself and engaging, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Sam. Our final and fifth candidate for opening statements is Adrin Nazarian. Adrin? There you are.
Thank you, LA Forward, for pulling tonight's event together, and thank you, Jason and Godfrey, for the outline for the evening. My name is Adrin Nazarian. I arrived to the San Fernando Valley as an eight-year-old fleeing war and revolution from my birth country of Iran. But displacement hasn't, has been a common theme for my family for the past three generations, as my family has fled persecution over the past century, four different, on four different occasions, whether it was the Armenian genocide, the Russian revolution, the Stalinist purges, or the Iranian revolution and war. So I've committed myself to public service, to overcome injustice and tyrannical government. And as immigrants in the US, I, I watched my mother work three jobs to provide for our family and remember seeing the stress she absorbed very quietly. I grew up with that, and so that's why I'm running for LA City Council, because I know the true cost of corruption, and because I have a track record of delivering policy which has improved the lives of Angelenos over the course of the past 25 years. The truth is, we're running out of time. I know it, you know it. And this next election, we can't afford to send anyone to City Hall who isn't prepared to deliver on day one. Future generations are counting on us to get it right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now we will get to know each of the candidates through five rounds of 60-second responses, each based on particular issue questions that they were shared with in advance. And so I am going to introduce our first question asker, Taina Vargas. Taina?
Hi, Godfrey. Thank you, LA Forward, and thank you to all the candidates for being here. My name is Taina Vargas. My pronouns are she and her, and I'm the founder of Initiate Justice and the executive director of our 501(c)(4) or Initiate Justice Action. We aim to end mass incarceration in California by activating the political power of people directly impacted by incarceration. I live in CD3 now, but I was born and raised in CD2 and still have a lot of family there, so excited to be part of this conversation this evening. So I'm going to be asking you all a question on unarmed crisis response, and I believe the first candidate who I'm going to be speaking with is Gillian Burgos. So the question is, what types of incidents do you think are appropriate for police to respond to, if any? And what do you believe should be attended to outside of the police, if any? What models of unarmed crisis response are you interested in, and how would you fund this and make this a reality? So Gillian, I will pass it to you.
Thank you. This is an excellent question. So the fact is that in Los Angeles, crime has decreased. Most 911 calls have nothing to do with crime or violence, and yet police are dispatched to respond. So many of the calls that are categorized as criminal actually relate to poverty, homelessness, mental health issues, and substance abuse. So most of the time, they pose no danger to the public, and typically, police response is one of force, especially when it comes to our Black and Brown communities. So I think that we can remove the police in these instances and have trained civilians, mental health therapists, and paramedics. I believe in unarmed crisis response models, and like Denver Star and Oregon Kahoots, these programs cost a fraction of the cost of police response and result in more positive outcomes. We can take the budget from the police that we will not be using and implement that towards unarmed crisis response, because they result in positive results instead of handcuffs.
Thank you so much, Gillian. All right. Next, I will pass the question over to Manny Gonias.
Thank you. I believe that our approach to public safety should be centered around a holistic and community-driven approach. We need more coordination between police and the community. And we know that incidents, some do require police response, particularly those involving violent crime, situation where folks are in psychotic breakdowns, which we see all too common now, and the immediate intervention. And that's unfortunately necessary to protect lives. However, we must also recognize that not all issues require law enforcement presence. And I think that's where we could really use and understand the other models and use alternative means. I am an advocate for investing in unarmed crisis response models that focus on de-escalation best practices, victim supports, et cetera, and building out a pipeline of mental health professionals to support programs. And I would fund this through public-private partnerships, federal, state, and local grants. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. And next, I will pass the mic over to Sam Kabushian.
Thank you very much. We need, thank you very much. We need, we need LAPD to focus on responding to violent crimes and solving crimes, crimes that got hot out of hand and just this post-COVID. And importantly, in many cases, the LAPD should not be the first responders. Anyway, we all know this by now. We don't need the LAPD to respond to the nine violent or non-physical disputes, traffic stops, without probable cause, or even complaints against our own house. And we have witnessed just in the past post-pandemic gap that, you know, we need accountable police officers versus, you know, the nonsense goes on as we witnessed just in a couple of days ago in the news. So therefore, I'm a big supporter of unarmed response, and we spoke about this with Jason recently at an event, and I will definitely support and allocate resources to it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. And next, I will pass it over to Adrin Nazarian.
Thank you, Tanya. First and foremost, we need to take police off of mental health frontlines and put them back in patrol. That's the essence of what's been wrong with all of this. And the reality is, it's not even the police officer's fault. It was government's fault starting 50, 60 years ago because of our lack of compassion of addressing mental health needs appropriately and in, in, in ways that had long-term impact. We didn't do that, and this just bundled up over the years, over the decades, and it became a severe horrific problem where police would get called to just deal with the situation. So police, I don't believe, are the main problem. It's making sure that the appropriate mental health experts and service providers are going to these calls and helping police in addressing the situations, and then slowly removing police out of the situation, having mental health experts deal with the situation only.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, I'll pass it over to John Paul Byrd.
Yeah, so I think that police should really only be utilized when the full gravity of their position is appropriate, right? So we're talking about things that are violent crimes, gun-related crimes, drug interdiction, sex trafficking, those types of things. Unarmed crisis response is really for any other dispute or violation that doesn't pose an imminent threat to life. Let's just make that the definition, all right? So that means traffic violations, right? We could repurpose parking enforcement into traffic enforcement. Drug and alcohol-related issues, we can use LAFD SOBER to get that program up and going, or PMRTs, which are psychiatric mobile response teams. We can also, you know, for psychiatric and emergencies having to do with the homeless population, again, we can use PMRTs. And we could also use the DMH Home Team, right? The DMH Home Team is specifically for homeless-related incidents. And the way that we pay for that, right, is, first of all, Kent Mejia discovered $72 million of idle funds that haven't been used for two more years. So those are monies that we can use to buy therapeutic bands, de-escalation centers, long-term care facilities.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, candidates. Those were all really thoughtful responses. Appreciate hearing from you. And now I'm going to pass it over to Scarlett to ask the next question.
Hi, everyone. My name is Scarlett DeLeón, and I am Campaigns Director with ACTLA, the Alliance for Community Transit in Los Angeles. We are a countywide coalition of 44 organizations that advocate for transit justice and social housing. We played a leadership role in the passing of ULA and now in the implementation. I have a decade of organizing and advocacy experience around worker, worker housing and transit justice. I am currently renting a home in CD2 where I live with my husband and our one-year-old. The owner of the house has offered us cash for keys and is actively trying to sell the house. I know that if I choose to, to move out or was evicted, I would not be able to rent the equivalent of this house in terms of space for my family. CD2 residents, like all Angelenos, are facing increased rents. So leaving this home will most likely mean I would be displaced from this area. It also means I would need to find new childcare, commute routines, and so much more. This is the moment our city is in right now, and that is why I'll be asking a question about social housing. So in 2022, voters said yes to Measure ULA, which created a transfer tax to fund affordable housing and homelessness prevention in LA. Its funding creates a pot of money for many types of affordable housing, including alternatives like social housing. The ACTLA Coalition, of which LA Forward Institute is a member, has been inspired by housing options like, in cities like Vienna and New York City, and is working with council members right now to approve social housing that is designed to be permanently affordable, built on public lands, and ultimately managed by its tenants. ACTLA's social housing platform embashes 8,000 social housing units in the next 10 years. Do you support social housing in Los Angeles? What would you do to make this a reality? Do you support other paths to commodifying housing, and if so, what?
So first, I'm going to pass it to Manny Gonias.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So yes, to answer the question, and I just want to show I've been in the work. I support your partners, even through my day job right now. I treat people like Trust South LA to allow in the scale through contracting with us. And I think that's a responsibility. Treat People is big now. We have enough work, and I think that's what I do at Treat People. I oversee a policy and research, so I'm proud to say that. And I think we need to utilize all housing models. City Hall is broken. It's been a theme tonight already. The government has failed to enact policies that enact the needs of people, and I think ULA does this, and the people voted for it. Yesterday, I was at City Hall with partners for the approval of $150 million for ULA. I think my role as a lawmaker would be to implement these funds with fidelity, support affordable housing production, tenant protection, affordable housing preservation, and of course, good stewardship of the funds. Accountability is paramount, in my view. And I know the issue. I've worked in leadership roles in Skid Row, the Weingard Center, LA Family Housing. I know it better than most, and I think we need to prioritize prevention. We can't continue doing the same thing if we really want to tackle homelessness. And I grew up in a low-income household. I get it. I dedicated my life to make these changes, and I want to make sure that we quickly build all housing models. Thank you.
Manny, thank you. Okay, now I'm going to pass it to Sam Kabushian.
Thank you. And yes, I do support, you know, the mansion tax, as it's known. The reason we're already in this mess because of so many other issues that, you know, not just corruption, but developers, but many other things that currently at stake have been sort of left unchecked. But I do support, and I think it's very important that we start believing in the concept of social housing. It works- It, it works practically everywhere and we can do it better here in LA because our weather is much better. You know, as dollars are collected, you know, I'll support efforts to repurpose vacant lands for affordable housing. Yes, you know, and also expand on lots that have been underused or misused. There, you know, LAUSD is the largest real estate owner in the city of Los Angeles. You know, they own over sixty-four thousand properties, and I think we can definitely get those properties and repurpose and reuse them for affordable housing and co-ops. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Adrien Nazarian?
Thanks for sharing, Scarlett. You're definitely not alone, uh, in your situation. Uh, first and foremost, to the answer the question, yes, absolutely. I, I would evaluate every option available, uh, every possible avenue that we have available to us to work through various ways to make sure that we provide the housing necessary, uh, is gonna be my key priority, number one priority for Los Angeles. And that means all types of housing, especially affordable housing, so that we focus on allowing our firefighters, police, city employees to afford living in Los Angeles itself. That's part of the challenge. Reality is when RENA numbers require us to develop fifty-seven thousand units a year, but we're only hitting sixteen thousand per average, there's a real crisis that's been developing and becoming larger and larger exponentially over time.
Thank you. John Paul Bird?
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. All right, thank you. So you know what, as a, as someone who experienced homelessness as a child with a single mother, I emphatically one hundred percent, yes, I do support social housing, right? As it's outlined, um, by the California Social Housing Movement. Now, in order to make this happen, Los Angeles needs to vastly grow its portfolio of real estate. And this can be done by utilizing ULA funds to acquire, uh, properties that are currently being auctioned at the county level for defaulted tax liabilities. So by doing this, we make it so that these properties don't go onto the speculative market and we're able to turn an unfortunate situation into an asset that benefits generations to come. Now with these properties, like this and also, um, you know, just the, the dearth of land that LAUSD has, we can create social housing, we can create community land trusts. Both are great ways of, uh, decommodifying housing. And importantly, um, in city council, I will, um, I will, I will put a cap on, on rents for one-bedroom apartments. I can explain more later, but I'm out of time.
Thank you. Gillian Burgos?
Thank you for the question. So I was able to bring Measure ULA to the NoHo Neighborhood Council, and we supported it as it was expected to generate some nine hundred million a year to subsidize housing, preserve affordable homes and guarantee council attendance and eviction court. As my next council member, my goal is to bring any opportunity for equity into the housing market. And I wholeheartedly support social housing. Housing can be treated as a human right. The only cost with public housing should be for maintenance, improvements and utility bills. It shouldn't be a job. So, um, we can prioritize this by, um, measures like ULA grants and allow tenants, uh, rents to go to the purchase of buildings. Other paths that I support are community land trust, uh, groups like Black Lives Matter have done this successfully. And community intended on buildings gives people the power over their lives and remove trauma and fear caused by housing insecurity. This will create healthier communities in which people will feel more investment. And when a community is invested and well-loved, it can finally heal and then flourish.
Thank you. Uh, thank you to all the candidates for answering my question, and I'm gonna pass it now to Sarah.
Thanks so much, Scarlett. Appreciate it. Hi, my name is Sarah Stephan. I'm part of LA Forward's Transportation Justice Group, and I've been part of it for several years, and I'm going to ask a question about mobility. The mobility plan was designed by the City of Los Angeles to accommodate the transportation needs of all users and all users is emphasized. However, so many choices that policymakers have made have forced people into a car-centric lifestyle and away from living a car-free lifestyle through being a pedestrian or riding public transit. Um, there has been a lot of concern about safety, frequency and reliability of LA's public transportation systems, as well as safety crossing the street with your family. And for so many individuals, we know that our time is money. And my personal relationship with transportation is if I can't guarantee that a bus is going to be there or the train is going to be there on time when I need it and I have to miss out on the opportunity of earning wages or, um, being, you know, at with my friends at the time that I'm supposed to be there, I just won't risk it. So the mobility plan is extremely important for the fabric of our communities to thrive. All right, I'll be asking the question, what project in the mobility plan specific to your district will be the first that you would implement if elected? And what steps would you take to ensure its full implementation? I'll start with Sam Kabushian.
Thank you, Sarah. As a, as a lifelong dash rider, you know, it's very important that we understand the, the meaning of public transportation. And one of the first things that I would do is I would support a fair, free fares on metro, both the train and the buses. We got to get ridership up and encourage people to get out their, get out of their cars. Importantly, educating about the process, about the timing and reliability. Uh, I support expansion of dash buses to build in the transportation gap. It's been central to my growth when I was a child, riding through the, you know, through the streets of Los Angeles. And importantly, for example, in CD2 has two metro train stations and the Orange Line, which is a great example of, you know, and along with the quality of bike lanes working alongside mass transit. And I think if we can expand them in, in, in sharing the roads, that'd be great. And I would expand more of the bike lanes and also provide importantly, education to our constituents who can use public transportation reliably. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Adrien?
Thanks for the question, Sarah, and I appreciate how you get, how you have placed this question after the housing because housing cannot be fulfilled without good investment in transportation. You look at LA's metro system, it's like a starfish. If you want to get to, uh, from the, uh, the San Fernando Valley to the west side, you need to go to downtown and then across. If you want to get from San Fernando Valley to Pasadena, you need to make a V, go to downtown and then go back up to Pasadena. So that is not conducive to a system that allows people free-flowing. So one, the goal is to build connectivity where infrastructure is already laid out or in the pipeline to be. So we can build connectivity faster and have more reason or efficiency to build out portions of the mobility plan where it makes more sense. Second, working with LEDOT, I look at opportunities adjacent to those projects uh, to help extend the footprint even more. That's where the bike lanes come and various pedestrian uh, programs come in to make sure that that happens.
Thank you. All right, John Paul?
Okay, so, uh, you know, I'm gonna answer this question, uh, specific to District Two, um, like this question is asking for. So if you look at the mobility plan for twenty thirty-five, um, first of all, District Two, you can tell, um, has not been a priority, right? The, uh, the main part of the city has way more express bus lanes and things along those lines. But what we can do according to the mobility plan for twenty thirty-five is, uh, complete the bike lane that is on Lancashire that goes from Universal Studios all the way north to Victory. And that's a protected bike lane. There's another protected bike lane that's planned on Sherman Way that goes from Vineland all the way to Van Nuys. Now, there are other bike lanes that are planned, however, they're not protected bike lanes. Uh, green paint, you know, it, it's great, but barriers actually save lives. So, you know, I would also be interested in, um, in working on that Van Nuys Express Bus Line, which shares the border with, uh, with CD six. And, um, you know, in order to get this done, I would definitely have someone in my office that is specifically oriented towards the task of implementation of mobility projects.
Thank you. All right, Gillian?
So we already know that Los Angeles needs to move away from a car-centric model. Uh, we should be treating each district like a fifteen-minute city by changing zoning laws to include mixed-use construction, focusing on, uh, fare-free public transportation and protecting cyclists and pedestrian methods of travel. So the first part of the mobility plan that implement is the true protective bike lanes, especially on Lancashire, which is actually already part of the mobility plan and part of the high-injury network. So bike lanes would help people travel across the district. And as your council member, I would partner with neighboring districts to implement bike lanes that would strategically connect districts and help people travel through high-jock dense areas and close to the metro. So we simply cannot rubber stamp any widening of roads, um, converting between Vineland and Lancashire. It, it took a lot of work from the NoHo Neighborhood Council to keep them from widening those roads. And instead of taking, and instead, we took a pedestrian-friendly approach. So if we hadn't objected, we would have simply added more traffic and pollution to our neighborhood for no benefit at all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Manny?
Thank you for the question. I would prioritize the enhancement of pedestrian and protected cycling infrastructure. I think that's very important. Safety is critical. Uh, last year, over three hundred pedestrian deaths occurred in LA, and that's five percent higher than the year prior, twenty twenty-one. And in my view, these figures are unacceptable, especially as an avid jogger. Uh, as a policy director at Tree People, I know firsthand how transformative good urban greening, sustainable projects and planning can lead to more sustainable neighborhoods and communities. And I think these pathways for pedestrians and cyclists will alleviate traffic congestion, reduce emissions, while promoting healthier and more connected communities. Um, the first step implementation, I'm a big community engagement person. I think we need to collaborate with community, transportation experts, advocacy groups to make sure that any designs and pathway aligns with community needs. And also, we'll do that through town halls, surveys, workshops and the funding, right? You need to have the funding. I'm a big advocate of drawing down federal formula and, uh, competitive funding at the state and local level. Thank you.
Thank you very much to all the candidates for speaking, and I will pass things over to Lorraine.
Great, thank you so much. I'm happy to be here. My name is Dr. Lorraine Lundquist. I'm a board member of LA Forward and very excited to be hearing from all the candidates today. I also teach sustainability at CSUN here in the valley, and I'm constantly working with students who are deeply concerned about their future as our atmosphere warms, which is one of many reasons I'll be asking a question about climate today. So my question is, LA City has a follow-through problem on its climate goals. We've declared a lot of things, like we've said, we will shift to a hundred percent renewable electricity by twenty thirty-five. We'll end oil drilling throughout the city. We'll cut car trips in half by twenty thirty-five. And we've even said we'll reduce greenhouse gas emissions twenty-five percent by twenty twenty-five. But we're not on track to make any of these goals, some of which are actually enshrined in law by council motion. So my question is, how would you address this implementation gap between council motions and the reality on the ground? And, um, if, Adrien Nazarian, if you could go first?
Thanks, Lorraine. Um, so ultimately, council's greatest power is to ensure that departments and the city are achieving the environmental objectives it sets, uh, uh, through oversight and accountability, ensuring that there's adequate resources to achieve these objectives. Um, so that is first and foremost, the most critical step. You have to hold your staff and your agencies accountable. But on the other side, you need to make sure that you're also listening to staff and seeing where the pitfalls are and when you're falling short. Uh, that does not happen as well as it should, and it leads to problems and last-minute polarization of, of making sure that answers are being received or had. So I would make sure that, A, I'm listening to staff, working with them, providing the resources and the timelines necessary to achieve the goals. And when they can't, work with our federal and state partners to make sure that we have the resources available to be able to deliver on those timelines.
Thank you. And next, we'll go to John Paul Bird.
Thank you for the question. So the first thing I would do is I would advocate for a climate clock in City Hall and all public buildings and public space where possible. And I will also have one in my office, right? An actual, you know, countdown clock that is telling us when we will hit that, uh, that dreaded number of one point five degrees Celsius where our, our environment completely tips. Now, systemically, the implementation, the, the implementation gap exists because large interest groups fund aggressively to oppose politicians based upon their actions on climate, right? This is a function of Citizens United, unfortunately. So there's really not a whole lot we can do about that. Um, but what we can do, right, is we can fight this by, um, ushering in democracy vouchers and giving, you know, giving everybody the right to stand up for their elected leaders so that these, uh, you know, these environmental villains, to a certain extent, don't have so much power over things. Um, also, we need to make sure that we're educating everyone about these pressing issues and doing it in a way that has optimism so that, um, people don't fall into the apathy that comes about with overwhelmingly disastrous disasters.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Gillian Burgos.
Hi, um, so we all know the Los Angeles City Council needs to pinpoint what is delaying the fulfillment of our climate goals. So most of these council files for climate change have no clear path for implementation. Uh, for instance, Council File two-one-dash-zero-three-five-two, uh, the Strategic Long-Term Resource Plan was first brought forward in twenty twenty-one and has gone through several discussions and votes only to be delayed in April of twenty twenty-three. That's already almost five months ago. So this file has sat for two years now in total, and now we are less than twelve years away with no strategic resource implemented. But we need to require progress in a timely matter because climate change cannot be stunted by bureaucracy. The easiest thing we can do is to build electrification and to focus on creating those fifteen-minute city models. We can start by having all new construction being electrified with electric appliances and, um, even implement solar panels and focus on mass transit, water recapture, planting trees and using green materials. If we, um, focus on having accountability, we can achieve these goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Manny Goniz.
Thank you, Dr. Lundquist. Well, to bridge the gap between policy implementation, I think we need to have accountability and collaboration, something that's been lacking in local government for far too long. Uh, I would advocate for transparent and regular progress reporting with proper staffing. We know on average, there's a twenty percent vacancy rate across all departments in the city. That's unacceptable. Uh, we need to keep our communities informed about the status of our climate goals. There's a lot of anxiety out there, particularly with the youth. And whether that celebrates successes or openly acknowledged setbacks, I think we have to be able to communicate. Um, and collaboration is key. I will work closely with environmental orgs, scientists, stakeholders about comprehensive but yet realistic climate policy. Learning from my experience at Tree People, where we, collaboration has been so key to our success. I personally upsecured and coalition a hundred fifty million dollars for environmental initiatives, but that didn't happen in a silo through collaboration and very close alignment, working with the governor's office, his various agencies, and I will work at City Hall with city departments and the very capable deputy mayors that our mayor has put in place. Thank you. Of course, to make timelines and variables.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next to Sam Kabushian.
Thank you. Uh, importantly, these are budget priorities. It has to be. The council can shift our vehicle, leads to electrical, uh, needs to increase access to charging stations across the city, reduce stove, stove gas usage and apply to various lead building methods. And importantly, expand the solar energy on all city-owned properties. Heavily invest in powerful grid infrastructure that can sustain solar energy dependence and make sure that we're consistent with delivering the electrical power to the, uh, to our constituents. Uh, I strongly support ending oil drilling in Los Angeles, especially in areas that are already underserved, like South LA and along the Harbor Gateway. And this is central to harvesting new green energy and making sure that our climate is controlled and can benefit the future generations. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for all of those answers, and I'm gonna pass it on to Sudhir.
Great. Thank you, Lorraine. Um, hi, my name is Sudhir Vijayan, and I'm the co-leader of East Valley Indivisible. It's a progressive activist group with many members who live in CD two. I myself live in CD four. Um, I'll be asking a question about the possibility of expanding the number of seats on LA City Council. Now, my group had worked primarily on the federal level until twenty twenty, when we started dipping our toes into state and local work. And one of the first things we did was endorse and work for the election of then-candidate Nithya Ramon in her successful campaign to represent CD four. Now, not long after, we, we got a shock when Councilmember Ramon's district, my district, uh, was totally destroyed and basically, and rebuilt during a very not-independent redistricting process. Um, later, when infamously recorded remarks between a couple of council members and a labor leader were leaked, I, like all of us, was shocked by the racism on display in those recordings. But I was also disappointed to hear council members talking about how Ramon's district was one to, quote, "put in the blender and chop up" because she wasn't an ally. And that gave me and my group a lot of clarity about what had happened to CD four during redistricting. Now, we all know that our council has been rife with corruption for a long time before that recording was released. But one good thing that came out of really what was kind of a national humiliation for our city is that it has created a moment and an opportunity to finally take serious steps toward reform. So my question in that vein is this. LA has had fifteen city council districts since nineteen twenty-five, when our population was radically different. Now, almost one hundred years later, each council member represents over two hundred and sixty-four thousand Now, almost one hundred years later, each council member represents over two hundred and sixty-four thousand people, giving us the highest ratio of residents to council members in the nation. Compare that with a hundred and seventy thousand plus people to each council member in New York City or fifty-four thousand plus people to each alderperson in Chicago. So my question is, do you support city council expansion to provide equitable representation for all Angelenos? How many seats do you think we should have or the appropriate population for council district and why? And we've come full circle, so we're gonna start now with John Paul Bird.
Okay, so, uh, as to this question, I agree with the California Common Causes proposal that Los Angeles districts should not exceed a hundred and fifty thousand people ever. Um, this will provide far better representation than our current system. So with that said, I believe that councils should be expanded to thirty-three seats. Currently, thirty-three seats will represent one council member for every roughly one hundred and eighteen thousand people, right, with the average population growth since two thousand nine being point four eight percent. Uh, each district would be able to contain a hundred and fifty or less constituents for the next fifty years, right? I would then want to, uh, I'd like to see the city charter amended um, to require an expansion of city council once districts are no longer to accommodate um, one hundred and fifty or fewer constituents. Um, this way, future generations don't have to wring their hands about whether or not to expand the districts. And in redrawing these districts, we need to have an infinite commission and a whole lot of community involvement.
Great, thank you. Um, next we'll hear from Jillian.
So I highly support city council expansion, and I would love to see it expanded to twenty-nine to thirty-one seats, even even larger later on. Um, currently, it's nearly impossible for community members to engage with their council map office, let alone their council member. Each ma- each council member is kind of like a mayor. So, um, the neighborhood councils were intended to bridge that gap, but at times it's very difficult to reach a council member's office, even as a council, neighborhood council member. We need to create a system that's more similar to metropolitan cities like New York or Chicago, so there's more fair and equitable representation. More voices of the community being represented is definitely a good thing. It's not something that we should be afraid of. And I hope that as your next council, council member, that I will pave the way for this. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jillian. All right, and next we will hear from Manny.
Great question, yes, but my priority and what I want to make sure it's not is more of the same, right? While expanding city council may be a solution, the real challenging, you know, thing facing the city is representation problem isn't just about the numbers, but we got to look at addressing the root causes, right, and that's something I'm interested in, um, that hinder effective governance in the first place. And you would find nobody who cares more about good governance than me. Our city needs to fix the deep-seated corruption issues that have plagued City Hall for years, maybe even decades. Electing public servants who have experienced the struggles of working families firsthand and who are committed to putting people first is crucial, and for me, that that's my priority. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And next we'll hear from Sam.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I I totally and absolutely support this expansion of the city council because currently, you know, uh, current council members have so much vast amount of power that goes unchecked, and and they use it, some of them use it and uh, for their fit, for their own purposes, and that's where we see the corruption at City Hall. And in the last four years, we've kind of witnessed everything with all these charges and as well as corruption set at home. So right now, I'm supporting that, I think logically, and we can grow this. I think twenty-three seats would roughly represent one hundred fifty thousand constituents, and I think that's a good start because same way how we weigh in on our, um, House of Representatives and uh, other redistricting methods every consensus years based on population. And in same way, we can start with twenty-three, which will give us about a hundred fifty thousand uh, constituencies for one council member. And as we grow as a city, and we will grow, we can expand every, I guess, every redistricting or every consensus comes around. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And finally, Adrien.
Thanks for the question, Sujir. Uh, first and foremost, I do support expanding the council, uh, whether it's twenty-one or twenty-three seats. I think what California Common Cause has stated is is true and accurate. Twenty-three would be ideal so that it ensures that there's a guaranteed A, uh, A, A P I community seat uh uh in Los Angeles. So if we were to make sure that we're putting every community in consideration and ensuring that everyone has a representative voice, uh, that would be the right number to grow it to. But I also want to forewarn that it's critical for us not to think about a body of forty or fifty individuals. It'll weaken the council institution versus the executive institution. It will also make the council president much more powerful. And I've served in an environment with a speaker. You don't want to make the city council into a legislature. You want every council member to be able to deliver for their constituents in their district, not dependent on the council president. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, and thank you so much to all the candidates for those answers, and I want to pass things back to Jason.
Great. Great, thank you so much, Sujir. Um, and thank you to all the candidates. Um, we're actually, uh, running a little early, so great job sticking to the timer. Um, that's really awesome. Um, so we're going to move on to, uh, the closing statements now. Um, each candidate is going to have ninety seconds, uh, for closing statements. Um, and we are going to start with, uh, Jillian Burgos.
I wanted to just say thank you so much for having me. Uh, I am the true grassroots candidate choice, and I am running a completely clean campaign by walking the walk and not taking any campaign funds from police, railcars, fossil fuel companies, or corporations. My goal is to be the voice of the people because I am one of you. I'm not a career politician, and as your next council member, I promise that I would only serve three terms, and then when I term out, my plan is to mentor the next generation and ignite them to lead. When we do that, we can have real change, prosperity, and a city that works for the people. And it's time to make that choice and choose ourselves. Uh, just like the friend, my friends on the picket line at Universal have chosen for themselves. We are the ones that we have been waiting for, and I'm looking forward to seeing that in twenty twenty-four. I hope you'll, um, go ahead and support me. Follow me at jillianforthavalle.com and sign up for my mailing list. Thank you so much for having me tonight.
Thank you so much, Jillian, and, uh, next will be, uh, Manny Goniz, and you have ninety seconds.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having me. This has been, uh, very fun and informative. Um, I've dedicated my life to public service and one capacity another, being in the nonprofit world or serving just that, and that's what I continue to do, and that's what I want to do. Uh, and I know together, you know, we can reshape City Hall, making it work for everyone. Um, I think incumbent inequality, um, the the interest in solving real issues and having real change on all the topics we covered tonight, uh, are very prevalent. Voters are frustrated. I'm one of them. And that's why I've dedicated my life to advocacy and fighting for the issues that I care about and justice, ensuring that our city services serve our residents and not anyone else. And I know that City Hall is broken, but I think there's hope and optimism, and that's what I like to focus on. I think you shared some of my platform with you all to kind of get a glimpse of what I'm thinking and some of the real systems changes that I bring, what I want to bring along with my work experience. But at the end of the day, I'm just a follower. I started a P T at my local L S D school. I care deeply about this city and about, um, North Hollywood and District Two, and I just want to serve. And I would love for you all to support me because I know together we could build a Los Angeles that thrives, uh, where every family has a fair shot at success. Let's create a city where, once again, we could be proud to call home. And please go on manigonis.com to learn more, and if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me personally. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Um, and next we will be going to Sam. Uh, Sam, you have ninety seconds.
Jason, it's it's been a, it's been a pleasure, uh, hearing and listening and having this opportunity to share my vision for this Los Angeles City Council District Two. You know, I I'm a viable candidate, you know, I received over five hundred individual contributions, largely from C D two. About seventy-five percent of my raised money came from District Two frustrated constituents who are seeking hope, just like all these that out there. In 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 short, I'm not a career politician. Uh, I've served on various boards of nonprofits. I've contributed wealth of my time in building businesses and helping businesses flourish in the city of Los Angeles. And importantly, I want to make C D two an ideal place for everyone to leave. And often, you know, we look at these movies, you know, uh, and we look at the valley and the suburbs, you know, away from the central uh, hustle and bustle of city downtown. And, you know, we want this for all, we're a bedroom community, and we need someone who actually knows practice or knows and has practical skills who can apply to building and representing our diverse group of constituents. And I'm very compassionate because I'm raising a family here. I care importantly, not just about every issue that we talked about, beyond those issues. There's issues that we haven't had an opportunity because of timing to talk about, but I strongly care that working together in 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 building alliance and cooperation, we can have a a model city, I think. And I will be delighted and honored to carry your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Sam, and next we'll go to Adrien. Adrien, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you, Jason, and thank you, L A Forward, for putting together today's, uh, the first public conversation about C D two. I'm looking forward to having more of these in order to talk about how we grow the housing stock, how we make sure that we provide the appropriate and necessary transportation that gets people everywhere they need to be and stop relying on single occupancy vehicles. Uh, uh, and can and continue making Los Angeles a place viable for middle-income, middle-class families to be able to thrive. So I want to say thank you for this opportunity. I want to highlight the fact that uh, I've quietly done my work for the past twenty-five years, whether as a staffer, whether as a legislator. I've won many victories for my district, whether it was making sure that we continue to expand rail, bring funding for mental health, bring funding for a Chandler Bike Path, and I will continue doing that. Proud to have the endorsement of up-and-coming leaders like Lindsay Horvath, Carolyn Menjivar, Henry Stern, Assembly Member Rivas and Friedman, uh, to just name a few. Uh, I've raised over four hundred thousand dollars from almost a thousand contributors, uh, most a great percentage of which are actually from the San Fernando Valley area. I have deep roots in this area. This is an area I care deeply about and want to watch my kids grow here and want to watch my grandkids grow here. So I look forward to representing and continuing to have our conversations together. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, and, uh, next will be John Paul Bird. John Paul, you have ninety seconds.
Hello, so I'm running for city council because I believe that Los Angeles has the ability to be a leader when it comes to housing affordability, homelessness, and the climate. Right, I'm running because the San Fernando Valley has time and again been left out of large decisions. It's been forgotten. Right, I'm running because I am sick and tired of the apathy and the inaction that happens at the state level, the county, and what we've seen at the city. All right, I believe that together we can unlock something truly special for the city. Right, a Los Angeles that works for everyone. A place that if you need help, you get it, right? No matter if you're affluent, working class, at the poverty line or unhoused, you get help if you need it. All right, I believe that Los Angeles whispers into the ear of the future the things that are come for the rest of the country, and we have the opportunity to lead in that space. Now, we're gonna face things that are unpleasant, right? We're gonna face things that are scary. And I'll be the first one to admit that the issues we're facing, they are scary. Right, they're scary because they're important, right? And we have to rise to the occasion with the courage that befits a great society such as ours, right? I'm asking that you believe in something better for Los Angeles. I believe, I I'm asking that that you believe in something that is truly spectacular, right, and that you trust me as your partner to achieve all that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you all, and, um, thank you for starting this conversation off. Um, I really hope that over the next year, we continue this conversation. And, uh, I look forward to getting to know all the candidates even better. Um, I'm going to be passing it on to Godfrey now to talk about, uh, next steps. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jason, and candidates for closing us out. Thank you for spending an hour of your evening with us. And if you are not a candidate, you're not a speaker, but you're here looking to learn and educate yourself about the possible futures of C D two um, and Los Angeles as a city, thank you for spending your time. Um, here at L A Four, we believe in unlocking democracy, and a lot of that is just getting plugged in and getting to know who's even running. When is this election? What are the issues that folks are talking about, and how are each of these candidates representing themselves distinctively? Um, so thank you so much. Um, in the spirit of, uh, that public conversation that we can have about the future, we can see in L A, we will be, um, uh, taking this recording and posting it up on our website and YouTube, and so keep an eye for that. Um, and so candidates, you can come back, um, to these conversations and, uh, residents and viewers, you can come back to these conversations as well. Um, just some next steps, um, and wrapping up. Um, again, if you liked anything that you heard from anybody here who was representing themselves or a campaign, they need signatures to get on the ballot. If they don't get enough signatures, they will not appear on the ballot um, at all for you to even have a a vote for them. Um, and so that should be starting, uh, beginning the middle of September or so. So if there are candidates here that intrigue you, uh, make sure you get down their information that they were putting into the chat box or sharing out loud um, to help them get onto the ballot. Um, we're doing this again same time next week with a different set of candidates. We have seven city council elections next year. Um, and so next week, we are covering Council District Ten, and we already have six confirmed candidates of the candidates there, and you see them on your screen, not going to go through all of them because today is not about Council District Ten. Uh, but in case that is intriguing to you, you can sign up, um, at laforward.org/calender, skip to the September calendar, and you'll see that we're doing a District Ten forum, we're doing a District Fourteen forum, and there are a couple of other things on there as well. So, uh, we want all of L A to be educated on its possible leaders. Otherwise, thank you all so much for joining us tonight. Uh, we are going to close out here. Um, thank you for spending your evening with L A Forward. If you're not yet a member,